The Urban Renewal Agency's Work Session to order. If the Recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kazer.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki, absent. Board Member Leong, absent. Board Member Osik, absent. Board Member Hoy.
Not absent.
Board Member Cook.
Not absent.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see any additions or deletions, so we'll go right into our discussion. We'll begin with the Downtown Streetscape, Kristen Rutherford.
Thank you. I'm Kristen Rutherford. I am the City's Urban Development Director. The Urban Development Department has two work sessions tonight. We will first conduct the Downtown Streetscape Work Session under the Urban Renewal Agency Board. I'm looking at the visitors that are here for a completely different topic. As soon as we complete this work session, then we will move on to the work session for the Homeless Task Force Implementation Plan. So we will close out of urban renewal and then start the City Council Work Session.
Would you prefer if we switch that?
Well, we have the consultants here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
As well, so we'd like to get them back on the road, back to Portland.
Okay, yeah. Great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, beginning with the Streetscape Plan Work Session, I would first like to give a little bit of background as to how we ended up focusing on this project. So about three years ago, when I started with the city, we were in the process of looking at paying, retiring our debt for the convention center and having additional bonding capacity. And we also had an action plan for the downtown urban renewal area that was from 2011. So we'd come out of the recession, we'd had a number of changes, and some of those projects had already occurred and been implemented. And so I wanted to revisit community priorities before we started budgeting future funds after we retired this convention center debt. So we convened a series of focus groups. We held 12 different meetings that involved a wide range of community members to look at the projects that are in that action plan and share with us their priorities and vision for downtown. And the number one project that came out of that effort was downtown Streetscape and a desire to create some place-making downtown and to soften the downtown and to kind of create an environment that was more conducive to lingering and hanging out and where you'd feel comfortable with your children. And so coming out of that effort, we then budgeted and moved forward with the Streetscape project and brought on a consultant team. So what we have for you tonight is not what we'll call like the ultimate plan. We're doing this in a phased approach. What we're going to talk about tonight is sort of the foundational piece, some base concepts. As we have spent the last year working on this and getting additional public input, there have been a few different things that have been going on. We have new development that's occurring downtown. So we want to have base concepts that we can adopt sooner than later so that as this new development occurs, they can be implementing this foundational piece. Then the second piece that we will come back and work on after we've adopted this foundational piece is street furnishings. We want to spend a little bit more time on street furnishings, layer that on top of the foundation because we want to make sure that we are, that we're going to be installing furnishings that will stand the test of time, that are going to be easy to maintain, that aren't going to create more problems than they're solving, that sort of thing. And then the third piece of this that we will all work on into the future are a couple of different elements that came out of the design process and through public input but which have been a little bit contentious. So, because they involved going into parking spaces. So the Streetscape concept is really from the curb to the front of the building, not into the roads. So we have a couple of areas where we're looking at options that would go into parking spaces and take some softening and greenery and landscaping out into parking spaces. But then we run into the conflict of demand for parking and the trade-off for the softening and some traffic calming. So we want to explore that further, and we plan on a pilot project where we will, if we can get a landscaper under contract, we ran into a challenge trying to do this last year because everybody's really busy right now. We want to bring in some landscaping and soil and take parking spaces offline for a month or maybe two months and test it out and not invest in the permanent solution, but put it out there and let people experience it and see what the feedback is from the trade-off from giving up parking in exchange for the additional greenery. So that will be an additional phase as well. So the focus tonight then is just on that, the base concepts between the curb to the building face. The consultants will walk us through this, and then we will stop afterwards and answer any questions you may have about the actual implementation and next steps. So I'm going to turn it over to Sheree, actually. I'd like, I'd like Sheree to come up because she has shepherded this. I'm surprised, I would like her to introduce her consultant team because she has spent a very large percentage of her time over the last year working with this team and with the public to get some good input. Sorry.
Good evening. Sheree Worgren, Downtown Revitalization Manager. Walker Macy, Ken and Morgan will be here to go through the Streetscape concept with you this evening. But in addition, I just want to thank public work staff and some team members that I have and Kristen, who have been instrumental. It's taken quite a while, lots of meetings, lots of public outreach, gathering information. And part of Walker Macy's team included Kirsten, who also helped us with outreach and helped us at the public meetings. But just special thanks to Michael Miller and Kevin Hartman and a lot of public work staff who were very supportive through this process.
It's the other one.
It's the other one.
Just a bunch of light.
All right. Thank you, Chair and Board Members. My name's Ken Perry. I'm a principal with Walker Macy. We're landscape architects and planners in Portland. And I'm joined with my colleague Morgan Maoli. Morgan's an urban designer with us. So it's an honor to be here tonight to present our Downtown Streetscape Plan. As Sheree and Kristen mentioned, we've been working since fall of 2017 on this plan. It's been a very enjoyable process, working with the people of Salem and with the city team, just sharing their vision for downtown and helping them craft a refinement to that vision. We also wanted to thank city staff, especially Kristen and Sheree. Sheree has been a great and supportive project manager and collaborator throughout the process. So as Kristen also mentioned, in previous work and talking to the community, there was a lot of support for Streetscape improvements as a catalyst for property upgrades and redevelopment, as well as just the encouraging of a more vibrant, active downtown Streetscape. So what we'd like to do is walk through some highlights from our report. You all have a copy of our report. And so we're going to present select pages from that report, just to give you a sort of a high-level overview. So as, when we started the process, we really wanted to get an understanding of downtown Salem. It was really important for us to do a deep dive into existing conditions. There was a lot of existing information available, but we wanted to do our own analysis. In the back of your report, there's detailed appendix that includes a lot of our maps and diagrams and understanding of that. But here's some of the sort of high points about our analysis of downtown. So just to start, there's some really delightful streets in downtown Salem. It's, you know, the combination of historic buildings and beautiful big trees and thriving businesses and places to eat and gather makes for a really delightful downtown. So we were looking for ways to build on that and strengthen that. We noticed there is an older generation of Streetscape improvements, as shown in the image in the top right, with this older sort of tile that's proven to be difficult to maintain and replace. In some cases, you've been replacing, the city's been replacing these with new, just nice, clean concrete bullbouts. And our project doesn't propose to change those at all. Those recent improvements will remain, but we're looking at places where those improvements haven't happened, sort of slowly and incrementally changing out some of this tile. That's one example of something that we noticed. We also looked at the tree canopy downtown. There's a lot of great trees downtown, but there's a lot of places where they don't have room to thrive or the wrong species has been planted. So there's a lot of opportunities to really build that tree canopy, fill it out. There's places where there aren't any trees at all, so obviously great opportunities there. And that was a key thing that was expressed by people that came to our meetings. They wanted to see more greenery and more trees downtown. There's, as I mentioned, a lot of really vibrant areas downtown, and we want to build on that. We know there's areas that are maybe struggling a little bit, so could benefit from the catalytic aspects of Streetscape improvements. So you're just sort of taking that important core and growing that energy. We also noticed that there's more and more events downtown, some really great things happening in alleys and other places like Go Nuts Downtown or the First Wednesday. So we planned our Streetscape improvements around allowing for these events to continue to happen and to make them even easier. And then maybe most importantly, looking at downtown, there's a lot of great things surrounding downtown. Riverfront Park, Willamette University, the Capitol Mall, the heart of Oregon's government. How could our Streetscape improvements better connect to these amenities, better highlight them, and just better integrate with all these great things about downtown Salem? So as Sheree mentioned, we had what we thought was a really rewarding public process with incredible feedback. We had more than 1,200 people engage in some form throughout the process. This included four open houses that we held, they were all held at chariots. We also did some walking tours. We did some very focused, small group sessions in the library over two days that focused on specific topics like street trees or public art and things like that. Our first open house was November 30th, and we spread out a large piece of butcher paper on the wall and just asked people to list their ideas and concerns. And we loved the results as people just jumped in there and drew and scribbled on their ideas. There was also a pretty robust online open house participation, and hundreds of people gave us comments that way as well, as well as just indirectly through city staff. So some of the messages that we heard, there was some, there was a lot of input, but there was really quite a lot of consistency. And we listed the 14 big ideas that people expressed us. And just as an example, people were, really wanted to prioritize the safety and comfort and the experience for pedestrians. They really wanted to clear off any obstructions that there were, to clear walking pathways. They wanted to make this a place for all ages and to make this welcoming for children, too. They didn't feel like it was currently. Obviously, I mentioned greenery and softness, bringing in more plants and more trees and making this feel like you are at the heart of the Willamette making this feel like you are at the heart of the Willamette Valley. How can that be expressed in the streetscape? I talked about connections. People were really interested in that idea. People like the public art that's been installed downtown, and they want to see more of it. They like the signage and wayfinding that's been installed recently, and they want to see more of it. So we just wanted to sort of build on existing successes that have been seen at the city. And these are a selection of quotes on the right that we pulled out. So through all this input, we found that there was four key guiding recommendations that could sort of guide our subsequent work. These guiding recommendations start with the big idea of knitting downtown together. And that means providing things like a consistent but diverse tree canopy. So stitching together places that don't have trees to make it feel more cohesive. Providing that clear, unobstructed walking zone for pedestrians. And just providing consistency. People felt like you could walk from one block to another and it doesn't feel like it's the same place. So how can we achieve that? The other big guiding recommendation was to celebrate the landscape. I mentioned that this sort of feeling like you're at the heart of the Willamette Valley, why not celebrate that and create this real green and place-specific environment? Add more planting, add more trees. Part of this was to also brighten downtown and encourage people to come downtown later into the evening with more lighting, including seasonal lighting. The third big idea was what I mentioned about the existing wayfinding and public art. Build on that and strengthen that. Identify more spaces for public art. And then the final guiding recommendation was to recognize what a lot of people wanted was to gather and linger downtown, spend time together, maybe sit together on the street. They didn't feel like there was enough spaces for that. So how could our plan establish and support social spaces? So through our plan, Morgan's going to present the details, but you'll see that there are consistent design elements throughout. So, for example, every street has provisions for more trees, more room for trees, more planting at the base of trees and in other places, just more areas for soil to help the existing trees and future trees thrive, as well as infrastructure to water those trees, as well as to power new and existing lighting so that we can have consistent, well-lit downtown. And the diagrams on the bottom express another element of consistency and simplicity. So in every streetscape type that we're proposing, there's a consistent furnishing, planting zone next to the curb. There's also always going to be a six-foot pedestrian zone for people to walk in all streets. Morgan will describe how there's different sidewalk widths in different places, but we can always achieve that. In the widest sidewalks, there's areas for frontage zone, which is where you might see seating next to cafes or a place for a store to present things that they're selling outside in nicer weather. And finally, in every streetscape, we've tried to accommodate some social seating arrangements. So through our analysis of downtown, we also realized that it's not a one-size-fits-all type of approach because there's a lot of different street types. There's sometimes subtle differences, but it was important to recognize the different characteristics. And so we've tailored our proposals according to this set of five different street types. So Morgan's going to walk you through each of those five types and what we're recommending.
Hello. The first urban streetscape design applies to most of the streets in downtown. And this is the baseline streetscape design. It has all of the elements that Ken mentioned. So in the center of the drawing, you'll see the six-foot pedestrian zone that's consistent. Between that and the road, we have a furnishing and planting zone. We've recommended that the plantings around trees are not grates, but are planted with some shrubs or grasses to soften the urban environment. And key to this design of the furnishing and planting zone is that where it's not planted and it's paved, the pavement is a darker color so that as we're locating our bike racks, our lights, our benches, it's very clear where that zone is and that it's not impeding the clear pedestrian zone. And then finally, as there's extra space, we have a frontage zone for business use.
Could I just, I hate to interrupt you, but
Of course.
Does this relate then to this urban promenade, civic? Are these the types? Am I understanding that?
That's correct.
Could you call, would you mind just calling those out as you do that? Like, was that the urban zone?
Absolutely, yes. This is the urban streetscape design type, absolutely. So the next type that I'll go over is the promenade streetscape design type. And this is the design that we applied to Liberty Street. It's very similar to the urban streetscape design. It has all of the same elements, a pedestrian zone, a furnishing and planting zone, a frontage zone, the tree wells are planted. The major difference about the promenade streetscape is that it has a nine-foot wide pedestrian zone. It's extra wide, and we did this for two reasons. One is that many of the sidewalks on Liberty are already fairly wide, and that gave us the opportunity to provide a walking space that's broader and more comfortable for larger groups of people to walk and stroll. That's why we called it the promenade streetscape. The second reason we suggested we design it in this way was that during public engagement, a lot of the people said that their primary favorite places to gather in the downtown were all across streets on Liberty Street. They were State, Court, and Schumacher. And so we wanted to provide a streetscape design that was tailored to provide space for these groups moving between these destinations. The third streetscape design type is the civic streetscape. And the key objective of the streetscape design was to provide a connection between major civic amenities, which is why we call it the civic streetscape. It's connecting between the Riverfront Park to the west and the Capitol and Willamette University to the east. And one of the most valuable aspects of a streetscape is that it can provide intuitive wayfinding. It cues people that activity continues by providing an unbroken line of trees and similar materials. One element of this streetscape that's worth noting is that the plan on the bottom of this image shows two different types of trees. And as we're designing some of these streetscapes, you might want to select more columnar narrow trees if there's a historic building behind them to preserve views to that building or business signage. And then it shows at the corners broader canopy trees, which might make more sense there as they wouldn't block a building and there might be more space for them to grow and thrive. So we have various trees available for all of these streetscape designs, and they're flexible to accommodate those types. On the civic streetscapes, because we really want to prioritize the wayfinding between these major destinations, we wanted to consider the vertical elements, the trees, because those are especially valuable in wayfinding. And in the civic streetscapes, we've identified broad canopy trees that would frame the views between these destinations and have bright fall color. The Parkway streetscape was identified as being slightly different because we found that the uses along Union to the north and Church Street to the east were a little bit different. This was a transition zone between more urban uses and more civic uses and residential uses. So while there wasn't a need in these locations for as much cafe dining, there was more need for buffering people from streets, and we could create a lush environment with some of that space. We also found that these sidewalks tended to be fairly wide, some as wide as 30 feet. So we have our six-foot pedestrian zone in the center, and then we allocated some of that extra space to even wider planting zones so we can support some really nice big trees. You'll also notice on the far left of the image, there's a vehicle clearance zone. This provides the ability for people to open their car doors and step out onto a hardscape surface instead of into a planter. You won't see that very often in an urban environment where you might want to reallocate that space for cafe dining or a wider pedestrian zone, but on these streets that aren't quite as busy, that can be a really nice thing to have. And the final streetscape type is the Front Street streetscape. We gave this its own type because Front Street is very unique in that it's an ODOT-owned highway, and it's a very important street because it connects the downtown to the Riverfront Park. It's very similar in its design to Parkway. It has a six-foot pedestrian zone and a fairly wide planting zone to buffer people from that more busy street, but there's no parking on Front, so you won't see that vehicle clearance zone. And then finally, alleys are one of the most unique and wonderful aspects of Salem as a city. The city makes really great use of alleys for events and for art, for businesses. And so their design was really integral to our streetscape design plan. We looked at the entrances of alleys in the streetscape plan, and we think that one of the most important things that we can do is extend the pedestrian walking surface across the entry to an alley. Right now, it's usually an asphalt drive aisle, just comment, but by extending the pedestrian walking surface across the front of the alley, it cues everyone, drivers and pedestrians, that this is a pedestrian priority zone and increases safety for people walking across that entrance. We extended all of the benefits of the streetscape designs to the alleys, the planting and the softening. We thought that these were great areas for some of those communal seating arrangements where people can face each other and have a conversation. We were lucky in that a lot of the alleys front onto streets that have 45-degree angle parking, and there's some excess asphalt in the triangles left over by that. And we can use that to plant and create a buffer around streetscape seating. That can be especially nice for some of our more vulnerable urban users like children to make them feel, to make their parents especially, feel more safe. We know that there's an alley naming project going on right now, as well as a project to contribute those names and historic names of the alleys somewhere into the urban environment. And we proposed in this project that those might be well-suited to strips as you enter the alley entrance that act as a threshold for people to know the name of that alley. Those are the broad streetscape design concepts. When you get into the guidelines section of the report, it goes into more detail about how these might be achieved in real-world conditions. And one of the important things in this section that we wanted to go over was how to achieve a consistent streetscape across all of the varying sidewalk widths in downtown Salem. So we have an example up on the screen of Court and State Street. And you'll see in the blue, those are sidewalks that are 15 feet and larger, so most of them are 15 feet and larger. There's a handful that are between 13 and 14 feet wide and a couple just half blocks that are 12 feet and less. So within this project, we're not exploring moving the curb. We're using the sidewalk width as it is. So I'll start with the narrowest streetscape at 12 feet or less. What we do in the streetscape design standard is to first prioritize the pedestrian zone at six feet. That's always a continuous element. Then after that, we prioritize the furnishing, or the planting and furnishing zone, and that can almost always achieve a six-foot width as well. On our narrowest street, around 11 feet, it might need to be five, which is still generous and can support healthy plants. And then on this design, we wouldn't have any frontage zone. And if businesses needed to put cafe dining somewhere, they could share the furnishing and planting zone. If a sidewalk is 13 to 14 feet, again, we prioritize the pedestrian zone, that's consistent, then the furnishing and planting zone, and you get about one to two feet for business use. And finally, on the majority of the sidewalks in this example, we have the six-foot pedestrian zone, the six-foot planting and furnishing zone, and you get around three to eight feet for cafe dining or business use. The thing to note is that the pedestrian zone is always consistent, and the furnishing and planting zone is almost entirely always consistent. And it ties those together. Our goals for the landscape were really set by the community. We heard very strongly that there was a desire to soften the downtown and to relate it to its place in the Willamette River Valley. So this translated to a list of plant palette that was lush, low maintenance, and fairly colorful. We're looking at plants that can be trimmed once a year and survive on drip irrigation, but that will provide a lot of visual interest to the urban environment. And we have a specific list of trees derived from the city's street tree list with some suggested trees specific to the civic streetscapes that might provide some fall color. I'll hand it back over to Ken now, who will talk about how all of these things come together in an example plan.
Thank you. So we think our plan is simple, and it's going to be easy to implement, either in a larger series of blocks or incrementally, one block by one block, or even opportunistically when an adjacent property redevelops with an apartment building, for example, or a new office. But we wanted to show you one example of the implementation of the plan, just to give you a sense of some of the details that are involved. So in this example, we're looking at the south side of Court Street between Commercial and Front. You might recognize the new apartment on the right side, so this is across the street from there. There are some beautiful trees there now. They kind of have low branches. There's some angled parking, and it's close to one of those crosswalks over to Riverfront Park. So the top diagram just expresses what's there now. There's a total of nine trees. There's a beautiful historic building on the right, or sort of the eastern half of that block. So that has the narrowest sidewalk probably in downtown. And that's probably a function of that historic building over time. But what we're showing in the proposed plan, which is the diagram below, is that you can build on those existing trees and you can maintain that number and even grow it to, say, 10 trees, as we're showing in this example. But there's a lot of flexibility. You could retain those existing trees if the community cherishes those or if the existing, the adjacent property wants to keep them. You could, if you found that some of them weren't thriving as well, you could replace some with better examples in more room to grow. Or you could, as we're showing on the right-hand side, those trees in front of those historic buildings are not really thriving. So with this example, we're providing more room for them to grow and really create more of a canopy on the street. What this also shows, on the east half of this block, the sidewalk again is only 12 feet. On the west side of the block, it's a little wider, 13 and a half feet. But what you're seeing through the score pattern is that there's always that consistent pedestrian walking zone. And then as you cross the alley, you could jog to maintain that consistent walking zone, but often there may not be a use that's using the frontage zone. So it just becomes a nice, wider sidewalk. We're also illustrating how this is a great example of where you could implement one of those alley entrance landscape projects. And there's also some more subtle improvements that will come about through this, which is enhancing the ADA accessibility of downtown, filling in curb bumpouts and ramps throughout the downtown. So Kristin mentioned there was a number of future projects for consideration. We've heard a lot of support. We also heard some concerns. So we wanted to include them in the plan and just emphasize that these are for further discussion. One example is that on the wide streets, Commercial and Liberty, that there's a lot of areas where there's some excess asphalt, and there was community interest in perhaps feeling like they'd like to reduce the perceived width of those streets. This is an example, looking down Commercial Street, you can see how people would express that feeling. So one opportunity would be to add pockets of landscape and trees, and that really dramatically reduces the perceived width of that and would actually also serve to slow traffic down. Another example that we heard a lot of support for, and we coordinated with the team that was master planning Riverfront Park, was to really improve the connections over Front Street to the park. This will take further coordination with ODOT, of course, but we're proposing much better crosswalks that won't erode, wider, clearer, well-lit, enhance the landscape in the medians and at the corners. And as this illustration suggests, maybe paint the existing shelters a brighter color to act as this wayfinding device from, even from the Capitol, you would look down the street and see that red shelter as a beacon welcoming you to the park. We talked about the events that are happening downtown, and just to emphasize that the streetscape plan that we're proposing, a number of different streets can accommodate future events and even temporary closure of streets for a farmer's market or a block party or something like that. And we highlighted the opportunities in these three examples. And then finally, the idea of parklets is gaining a lot of traction in a lot of towns in Oregon. There's a lot of opportunities here. You can do them on a one-day basis, you can do them on a seasonal basis, or they could be permanent, but it's going to take more outreach with adjacent property owners just to maybe assuage some concerns about parking laws. So with that, we wanted to thank you for having us here tonight, and we wanted to thank all the citizens of Salem for collaborating and meeting with us and offering their ideas and energy throughout the process. And again, thanks to the city team for their support and collaboration. We look forward to the discussion.
Very good. Counselor Lewis.
A couple of questions, and I don't know if you necessarily have to go back to the graph, but the sidewalks that would be able to have the cafe dining, is 15 feet the minimum that we would need, or can you have dining on a sidewalk that's narrower than that?
So on the narrower sidewalks, the dining would not be in the zone closest to the building? It would be out in the zone where the furnishings would be and the landscaping is? So it could still occur, it just would be in a different location.
Okay. Dining as opposed to sitting. Do we have an inventory of how wide our sidewalks are inside the zone? Like, is there a list?
We do now. We do now.
Yeah.
We did not at the start of this project, and that was one of the things that we discovered through this, is that there is a great deal of variation on the width of our sidewalks in downtown.
Is that in here?
I don't think it is in, is it? Yeah.
So, I was curious what percentage of the sidewalks are, let's say, 15 feet or wider?
I can make a guess.
Yeah.
I'd say 60%.
Just give me a second, please.
I'm sorry. My guess would be 60 to 70% are above 15 feet, but we could absolutely look that up and do the math for you.
And on the opposite, the most narrow sidewalks, what, is that, I don't remember what it said, six feet is at the narrowest, or?
About, within our study area.
So, the lowest, let's say eight. What percentage would you say, as a guess? It's eight feet or?
Do you feel about?
It's really only on Ferry Street where you have the narrowest sidewalks. So, it's just that one street, and only half of that street is in the study area technically. So.
Okay. Councilor Kirk?
Thank you. I was really excited to see the traffic calming, so thank you for taking this project on. I had a couple of questions, though. As far as delivery trucks are concerned, I know with the streetscaping and access to traffic right now, depending on the time of day and the day of the week, you can get stuck behind some of those delivery trucks if you're driving through downtown. Is the plan to shuttle more of that delivery traffic into the alleyways, or what is the?
This project did not look at on-street transportation or things like deliveries. Okay. So, we're not anticipating any change in that regard.
Okay. And then also, as far as the bulbouts are concerned, which I know are wonderful for pedestrians and narrower crossing field, how does this relate to active transport with bikes? Because sometimes those very bulbouts that make it safer for pedestrians to cross the street can create a barrier for those choosing to bike or use alternative transportation downtown. I know we have some bike lanes downtown, but they really don't connect too much. So, if you could kind of talk about that plan?
So, again, this, that, bike lanes are transportation. So, we did not get into transportation elements as a part of this project. This project focused completely on the curb face to the building face and not what happens on the street.
So, with the bulbouts, is it possible to have a bulbout that's not a barrier for bikes, or to be, I just, I see that we're moving that project, but I don't, I want to make sure that if our project is in conflict with another project, that we're addressing that head-on.
So, Kevin Hartman from Traffic Engineering is here, and I am going to turn this one over to Kevin.
Good evening. Kevin Hartman, City Traffic Engineer. The bulbouts aren't going to go beyond where the parking is, so the travel lane for bikes aren't affected because they, the parking, the bulbouts don't go beyond where the parking spaces are.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Anderson?
Thank you very much. I understand that we're not looking at the actual transportation, but I also see that Director Fernandez is here, so I'm going to say a few things that struck me about the The first one is that, based on what most people said, they want to be able to park, to walk and move around with not a whole lot of, I don't know, concentration on traffic. And so, I know when I'm driving and going north, not going to downtown, but going through downtown, I go on to Front Street, both coming south and going north. And I'm wondering if there's any thought, Director Fernandez, as to trying to direct the traffic that is going through north and south by signage or by some other way, or turn, you know, mandatory turn lanes to get to Front Street, as opposed to driving through town?
Right, certainly. And that's the, Front Street was designed to do exactly that.
It's like a bypass to downtown.
It is exactly that. So, and all of our planning relates to improving the pedestrian feel on Front Street, but not limiting the fact that that is what Front Street is intended to do. There's already signage out there that sort of directs you, directs, I think, I think most people know to go around. Somebody, you know, coming from outside the city may not understand it fully.
The only thing I'm wondering is something like through traffic, use Front Street. I don't know if you have those kind of signs, because.
Well, they're all ODOT signs, so we have to work with them to, to say that, but they're, the structures are certainly out there already.
Okay, good. Now, these are just a couple other kind of general comments. And one is, is, this is outside of the study area, but I look at the Civic Center Plaza there, you know, which is just cut out of that, you know, it's at Commercial and Trade Street, I think. And that seems to be an area that is woefully underused, and so this doesn't have anything to do with downtown, but it does have something to do with downtown, and I would love to see some sort of emphasis on that. Then, this just happens to be a personal thing for me, and this relates to things that are downtown. The farmer's market is wonderful, but the painting on the surface there is this reflective white. And I know I've talked to Kristin and I think maybe Cherie about it, and it sure seems it would be good if you could paint that some other color. Maybe that's the bus people, but you go down there on a hot day, and it's just popping right up, and you have to wear sunglasses, and it can, the temperature can really rise. So, I don't know if there's some way you could do something about that. Then, I have a specific question for Ken and Morgan, and that relates to the, on page 14, to the, oh, the elements that everybody liked and everybody was looking for. Is that in any kind of order?
No, that's just a list.
Okay, okay. You know, and I note that all of those, plus all of the four guiding recommendations, none of them really say anything about, "We want traffic to move through this city downtown as fast as it can go and on Peter's ago." And we also see nothing about, you know, "We want more parking," or "Better parking," or "More convenient parking." And I presume they're not in there because they weren't really mentioned much.
Yeah, those didn't rise as major topics of.
Okay, because I note that in one of the parts you reported says, "There's this conflict between people who want things to be slowed down in downtown and people who want to get through downtown as quick as they can." And it doesn't seem like it's a fair fight, from what I can see from what has been recommended by people. I have some other comments, but I'm happy to let somebody else take the floor.
I'm going to follow up, since you've got Fernandez warmed up.
I was only here to support Kristin. I'm happy to leave. This is really her night.
But I heard something on the discussion, I think of the urban streets, that caught my attention after 12 years of trying to convince the city that a two-way State Street, two-way Court Street. And it was that description of connection with Willamette University and the Capitol. And the, can we expect that that will become part of this discussion? That's, 12 years, two blocks just doesn't make.
Yeah, I'll jump in. So, this is the streetscape plan, from the curb to the building?
Yeah.
Council should recall that there was the downtown circulation study that involved the street system, and in that plan, there is, and that plan is still operative, and is, this is another, these, those two go together. So, the two-waying of State Street, the added bicycle facilities that connects, you know, improves Union Street and connects, you know, High and Church, and all of those are still happening. This is in addition to.
Well, I want to understand, because I felt like it described an integrated system. Will those be part, then? I realize it's not, you know, the defined area, but it really seemed to fit well with what they were describing as the objectives and the overall look of the downtown.
So, there has been some amount of design work that has occurred about, what, a year ago, Cherie, on the two-waying piece, that, then we kind of stopped on that to wrap up this, because some of this information is informing the two-waying piece.
Okay.
So, that, and then when this is adopted, then the two-waying can move forward.
Okay. I would just hate to see us do a lot on those streets we're going to two-way that doesn't integrate well with what's going on there. And you're telling me it does?
It does, yes.
Okay. So, just so it contemplates that. Very good. Councilor Cook?
Thank you. So, I recognize the streetscape portion is not the transportation portion. People requested places to linger, things to do, and it was really exciting to hear about temporary opportunities to test ideas out, but also kind of diving into what Councilor Anderson was talking about with requests for parking, or this sort of idea of people don't want to linger because of one reason or another. How are we coordinating with transit or being able to provide access to people that don't live downtown to be able to participate in those events? Are we coordinating with places like Willamette, if they're already living there, or commuter shuttles, those kind of things? Is that a later-on project to be able to facilitate better use of downtown for people throughout the city?
So, commuter shuttles are not something that we have discussed as a part of this project. That is something that was looked at in the Urban Renewal Action Plan and in, I think, in the mobility study, there was a downtown circulator that was discussed. The issue there is the funding and operation of that, because while it's identified in an urban renewal plan, it's not eligible for urban renewal funding. We can't operate something like that. And then we have the Transit Mall that is downtown, you know? So, there are buses from around the city that come in and out of the Transit Mall throughout the day.
But I didn't see the Transit Mall in any of the pictures, and I didn't hear it identified necessarily. I mean, I recognized Court Street was there, but what I saw was the destination, not the...
It's included. It's included within the boundary of the study area, yeah.
Is everything that was talked about, all of the different elements of this, is that all eligible for urban renewal funding?
Yes.
Everything?
Yes.
The trees?
Not, not the maintenance, not the ongoing maintenance of all of this, but the construction, yes.
But the water system, the electrical system, the trees, the landscaping, all of that is eligible then to be done with urban renewal funds? How, if you were to add it, I don't know if there's a dollar amount associated with this, but is this a real expensive to do, or how big a deal is this?
We haven't moved into design yet to develop cost estimates.
Okay.
So, we're just still at concepts right now.
But it'll all be eligible?
Yes, yes.
And that was part of the charge then to Macy Walker?
So, once concepts are adopted, then we can start moving forward with specific design and cost estimating that. And we have a couple of areas that we're looking at because of new development in those areas, and we would like to be able to partner this work with that new construction so that we're not having new buildings come in and build out, put in new sidewalks, then come back and tear it all up to do this.
Will they be required to go to 15-foot wide sidewalks, then?
No.
It'll integrate into whatever the.
They will not be widening the sidewalks or basically narrowing the right-of-way. So, the sidewalk widths in front of those buildings will continue to be the widths that they are.
Okay. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fernandez, back to this, trying to draw you back into this. I seem to remember a conversation you and I had some time ago, maybe over a year ago, about the protected bike lanes and the reason that we weren't able to do them to the extent you wanted to was because of the bulbouts in some of the corners, and so we did the best we could with what we had without having to tear things out. Does this kind of cement those, so to speak, into a forever, like we're going to always have those and not ever have the protected bike lanes on certain routes, or does this impact that at all?
Well, the protected bike lanes on High and Church is where we could afford to remove a travel lane and actually put in a safe place. When you move over into Liberty, we can't afford to remove any parking spaces or any travel lanes, and then parking is already, in some places, already parallel parking on the east side of the street, some places, both sides of the street. So, those bulbouts are really set, you know? So, that's, so on Church, on Liberty, it's set. On Commercial Street, there was a recommendation in cooperation with the bicycle community that we use sharrows on those. So, we went to three lanes from four, and the recommendation was use sharrows, and we reached out to the bicycle community quite a bit, and that's what they recommended, so that's what we installed. So, I think we're in good shape in terms of where the bulbouts are today and how they work with ADA, given that our streets are designed with those big crowns. That's actually by design, not by extra asphalt, as we found out when we were redoing them. So, what we have is, we solved the issue of bicycling in downtown by High and Church, and then we now have to make the connection to Union Street and then to the south so that people can get all the way to Busch Park and get, and can get east-west using Union Street. And then over time, I think we have some opportunities, I think, on State Street to put in bicycle facilities so that there's kind of a southern-eastwest route as well.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I wasn't more clear. I wasn't suggesting that we do more, like on Liberty or Commercial, I wasn't suggesting that at all. What I was trying to figure out is, will we ever get to protected bike lanes on Church and High, as opposed to, you know, parts of it, we have them now, where you have the curb and then the bike lane and then the parking? In some places, it's the curb, the parking, then the bike lane? Are we ever going to get that consistent all the way up and down High and Church?
Realistically, probably not.
Okay.
So, I mean, what we have is what we have, you know, because of, you know, just really the, you know, the angle parking, you know, kind of how things exist today, you know, we'd want to complete the system instead of going back and redoing. So, could we? Yes, realistically, probably not.
Do you have a proposed caliper of tree? When you talk about replacing trees or bringing in new trees, is there a certain size of tree that you recommend?
It would just, it would depend on the species.
Okay.
Typically, they start pretty thin, because you want to establish them when they're young.
Okay.
So, three to six inches is common for a young tree newly planted.
Okay.
Just gives them a chance to thrive better, and they'll grow pretty quickly.
Okay, great. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. Want to give Director Fernandez another chance. And this is something that I've talked about with the Director Rutherford and with you, and I also know the Congestion Task Force has talked about it, and that is, that relates to one of the recommendations, which is the crossing at Court Street to the park. Because based on the recommendations of the Congestion Task Force, one of the recommendations is to shut down the, at least the north end of the crossing, and I would hope maybe even both crossings on State Street, because, excuse me, Court Street, and have the entrance to the park beyond State Street because of the problem with people coming off the ramp from the bridge, coming eastbound, trying to go southbound. Anytime anybody pushes that light, it backs traffic, has potential to back traffic all the way up to the bridge. So, I'm just interested in how we're going to integrate that, because to me, cutting off the park, the sidewalk, or the crossings there would have, wouldn't cost much for us, but would have a potentially large effect on traffic trying to go south, gets backed up for three minutes or however long it takes where somebody presses the button.
Okay.
So, the, let me, I'll give it a shot first, Kristin. So, on the southbound side, we really wouldn't gain anything by removing that crosswalk, because, you know, you've got to stop at State Street anyway, so I wouldn't recommend that. The thing that we talked a lot about was, on the northbound side, the north crosswalk on Court Street. You know, I think the solution there is perhaps limiting those crossings during peak hour, especially the PM peak hour. We've attempted to experiment with that. ODOT isn't real keen on it. It's an ODOT facility, but that's what we'd want to reach out to ODOT and not just get rid of it 24 hours a day, but really see if we could limit crossings, or put up a sign, or not have it activate during the peak hour.
Sure.
And it's not an easy thing to do, because we've talked to ODOT about it.
Nothing is easy to do, we're discovering.
We wouldn't move forward with those crossing improvements in isolation.
Okay. Councilor Kayser?
Thanks. Just wanted to say that I really like this plan, so thank you for your work on it. And some of the things I jotted down that I like about it is it's consistent throughout the whole downtown, which we definitely need. Our downtown's old, it's developed over time, and it's own character on each block. But I think that the plan is, in a lot of ways, it's really simple, but that's good, too, because it's flexible in that way. I like that we differentiated the streetscape types, because we do have really different types of streets downtown, so I think it's good to have those applications on different types of streets. I think our alleys are one of our most under... I think our alleys are one of our most underutilized assets in downtown. I think they've been getting more traction as we have businesses open and people are just more interested in them. So I really like the idea of having these alley entrances and really inviting people into that and making it like this is a pedestrian space. Yes, we have deliveries and traffic and stuff, but it's really like focused for you to just walk through and really engage with other people. So I really like the idea of naming the alleys and actually, you know, people referring to them by, you know, I'm going to be at the, I don't know, whatever it is, the arts building alley or whatever it might be, but I think that's a really, really neat thing. I'm curious about, and the other thing I really like is the mid-block landscaping. I think it helps with that, the traffic calming, because we want our, you know, I think we want our traffic to continue moving, but we don't want people to feel like it's a freeway because they have three lanes there. We still want them to recognize like, you're in downtown, there's a lot of people, you should, you know, be aware that people can be crossing the street or riding their bike or kids can be darting out possibly. So, you know, just be aware that you need to slow down. And I think some of those pieces can help calm without removing the width for a travel lane and that sort of thing. So I'm curious about recommendations for implementation. That might be a further discussion, just as far as, you know, what you would recommend. I like the idea of the zones, especially when you have your, because right now we have a mix. We have some tables are near parking, some tables are against the building, and then you have servers that are trying to cross like the sidewalk and for food and, you know, that kind of stuff. So having consistent zones and you just know like, hey, there's going to be dining and stuff over here and there's going to be people walking over here. So I'm just curious about what the plan might be for, how do we actually do that or start to establish that even now, kind of those zones?
So next steps would be first to move forward with adoption of the space concept, and then we could move forward with the work on mid-block crossings and also with the furnishings. Then we would start design work, and we have a couple of areas in our downtown that we'd be looking at as sort of our initial pilot projects to implement this around where the new hotel is going in and where the new apartments are going in on State Street and Commercial. So that's the first area we're looking at targeting. We've had some conversations with the property owners, Scott Cycle, the Den Bar, who are also, you know, very interested in this project. And if we can kind of dovetail these, it would be less disruptive to them as well with all the construction that's going on around them. In terms of how we start making these changes throughout downtown prior to construction, I think that would be pretty difficult to do. I think it's going to take the actual construction to then change behavior. I think to try to get people to change behavior and how they use those spaces in absence of the construction is going to be an uphill battle and not something that we could necessarily enforce. I think it's much easier to make that transition when you've got kind of a clean slate to work with. So, you know, I think we would be looking at doing this then as a phased build-out throughout the downtown, first targeting opportunities in conjunction with new construction, and then start moving strategically throughout the downtown over a period of, you know, kind of probably five to six years of rolling it out.
Can it go faster than that?
Possibly, possibly.
I sure would recommend, I want to second Councilor Kazer's comments about it too. I really like the plan. I think the simplicity of it and the clarity of it is really, really good. And I think one of the things that we've all learned is time doesn't always work for this kind of a project. And if we can, the faster we move, the more likely we are to have that kind of consistency rather than...
Yeah, well, no more once we start getting into the design and we start learning what sort of complexities we have underground and what sorts of other issues we might be running into when we, you know, start digging things up. And then I think the other part of it that we need to be sensitive to is how much of the downtown we want torn up at any one time.
Right.
You know, so to try to do it all at once, it would just shut down downtown. So we're going to want to be really thoughtful in how we phase those impacts and give us time to work with businesses.
We've done an hour on this. Would you like to keep going for just a couple more minutes and then we'll move on? And I'd stay pretty focused on the landscape. We really did, I mean, poor Fernandez just wandered in here looking for a place to sit. Yes, go ahead, Councilor Kazer.
So I just, in talking about future projects and in looking at ADA compliance, motorized scooters, the speed of assist devices, it's come up a couple of times and just scuttlebutt about things like scooters or, how would the streetscape allow for that based on width and use of sidewalk? We're, again, purely talking about pedestrians, and I know downtown, we have limits with no roller skating, cycling, skateboarding on sidewalks. Does this change any of that? How does the streetscape remain flexible depending on what happens in the future with possibly faster walking?
You want to handle motorized scooters? I mean, I think right now we're looking at those being off the sidewalks, that they would be on the street.
So those would all be on the street?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious about plan development. Where are we at? Is this pretty much it? Are we, are you still contemplating edits to this thing? Where are we at and what's the timeline?
This is it. So after this, then the next step would be to move this forward for adoption.
Okay. Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to focus a minute on the use of the alleyways. There's a finite amount of space downtown and those seem to be the least used. Is there, first of all, is there a consistency with the width of the alleyways in Salem?
There's some consistency in terms of the actual alley right-of-way, but in terms of usable space, there's a lot of variation because not all of the buildings are built up to the property line. So some have off the alleys, is some parking and, you know, privately owned area, but I think through the alleys are fairly consistent in terms of the right-of-way width.
Is there, I'm thinking of cafes and pubs and things like that that would have outside seating, but there would still be room enough for delivery trucks and possibly a way to separate, like create a sidewalk or a level above where people are, but still have enough room for the delivery trucks to go through.
Yeah, so where those areas exist, you see there's some places that have like a little sidewalk, you know, some of the alleys back in the 70s or 80s, we did that where it was possible. But in other areas, yeah, it just won't be possible. I mean, that's, we have what we have and we still have to, you know, what makes alleys cool is that there's garbage in them. I mean, that's, there's no other place for, you know, for the garbage cans and for parking and for whatever deliveries happen back there. So it all has to happen within this little space, and the little space still has to allow, I mean, unless there's a special event, that has to allow for, you know, everything else to get through. So places like the Victory Club or 1856 have a little room to be able to, nine, whatever. Yeah, whatever. Whatever year the cider was brewed.
The party is behind the times.
That makes sense because you have spaces for people. I know when Corvallis went through this, simply putting all of the garbage cans on one side of the alley had a positive effect. It's silly what little things can do.
Councilor Anderson.
I certainly echo what Councilor Kazer and the mayor said about this is a good plan. I also agree about alleys. I mean, most of us have probably been to Europe and seen the alleys there, and they're fantastic places. The other thing I would say is that you folks appear to be familiar with Chuck Moran and Strong Towns, and so I'm really in favor of the mid-block landscape areas that you put here. That is a way to slow down. I mean, we can obviously put something at the end that Moran says to do, but you can certainly put something on the side, so I think that's terrific. I also would be very excited about parklets if we're talking about what the future projects would be.
Yeah, I hope that we don't lose the parklets in the parking debate, that we, there really is quite a bit of work on that. I know you have, that is a future item, but I think that was one of the real attractive ideas were the parklets, so.
And I think there's still a lot of interest in that too. We, because of pending construction, you know, we really wanted to get the base concept moved forward and not have that get held up around any discussion around parking versus landscaping.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you so much. We really are very, very pleased with this. This really is an excellent place for us, like you say, to build from. I mean, it really gives us a ground to work with, so thank you very much. Take everything you heard, Fernandez, real seriously.
Mayor, before we close the urban renewal area, I would like to express my thanks to the other departments, the technical advisory committee that we had. We had very good participation, very helpful. I appreciate their work. And I also want to thank Cherie, who did just a fabulous job project managing this.
Yeah, this has been just really a model of public outreach and really incorporating a lot of really good ideas. So thank you all very much, really appreciate it. Thank you. We're going to then move on to our downtown homeless task force, and if you want to start, Kristin.
We need to close.
Are we going to do this city? Okay. I'll close the Urban Renewal Work Group and open a city council work session for February 18. We haven't added any new people, so we'll, on the council, so we'll keep going. Kay.
So I would like to turn this over to Councilor Kazer to introduce the subject, and then I'll move over to the recommendations, the implementation plan.
Well, thank you. Not quite sure what you'd like me to do, but I'm just going to, I'll do a really quick recap and correct me on my dates because I'm not completely sure and I don't have all my notes. But so the mayor, you know, convened the Downtown Homelessness Solutions Task Force. I believe it started up about a year ago, and we had representatives on that. Members of the task force included downtown business owners, social service providers. Councilor Lewis, Councilor Osik were on that task force, and we had members of the community, city staff, and Kristin kind of helped me run it actually, which I'm really appreciative of. And we met as a group, I think it was six times, over the course of February through August. We wrapped up in August, and we had good conversations. The scope of the task force was very narrow. It was really to focus on what could we do now to improve the conditions of people experiencing homelessness downtown. And it wasn't more than that. So, and that's what these recommendations really reflect is that narrow scope. And we had good conversations. They were difficult. I think the subject matter is difficult. We had a lot of written comments. We had, I think we invited guests. I mean, we kind of went through this whole exercise with a period of about six months. And what we came up with is something I'm really proud of, these, I think it's eight recommendations or so. And yeah, so that's kind of a really brief recap. I know, once we made those recommendations, then staff went back to try to figure out what's the best way to implement these? What are some of our options here to actually do what we're talking about? And that's where we're at tonight.
Great job on chairing this. I sat in on a couple of them and you just really did an outstanding job, both you and Kristin, Councilor Kazer. I'm really pleased with the outcome. I think we have some stuff to really work with here. Kristin, are you going to take us through this?
I'm going to take you through them, yeah. So I'm going to start kind of high and then drill down. Early on through the task force meetings, the group identified four main challenges to address that were impacting downtown and needs for the homeless community. So the first one was showers, toilets, laundry, hygiene facilities. The second one was behavioral expectations. Third was a safe environment for everyone, and the fourth was cleaning up garbage and human waste. So all of these recommendations kind of fall under these four big challenges. The recommendations that were made kind of fall under three categories of either they're facilities-type recommendations, they're operational recommendations, or they're recommendations around communications and relationships. So I'm going to read through the eight recommendations here, and then we'll start diving into the implementation strategies. So the first one was to provide public toilet facilities that are available 24/7. Second, provide a hygiene center with showers and laundry facilities to serve homeless individuals in the downtown. Third was to establish a good neighbor partnership, so an ongoing organizational structure, and then through that to look at our codes and ordinances and kind of vet any ordinance changes through that structure. Four was to establish a simplified point of contact and to provide guidance for the community on when to call 911 versus emergency services. Fifth was to support development of additional storage for homeless individuals. Six, an alternative, support alternative ways of giving. Seven is encouraging property owners to build out site modifications to improve security, you know, kind of garbage control, that sort of thing. And then the last one was pursuing options for expanding downtown cleaning services. So since these recommendations were made back in August, we have since, you know, researched each recommendation and developed implementation options. We've looked at these recommendations strategically to look at how we can leverage our existing financial resources or facilities or partnerships. We have amended the downtown urban renewal plan. So if you may recall, back at the end of last year, we passed a minor amendment to that plan to add projects that supported implementation of the city's strategic plan and the task force recommendations. We have developed a new grant program that will be coming to you at your next urban renewal meeting that will support grants to property owners for things like trash enclosures or if they want to secure or gate off their doorways or install lighting or other security And we have conducted a few internal meetings between different departments with police, and we've taken it really broad within the city, just going to be on urban development and the police, to all city departments to really talk about more global impacts in the community. And we have also developed a who-to-contact flyer for the 911 or emergency piece. It has not been rolled out yet, but we have that in a draft form at this point. So our next steps will be to go through the implementation options and then start moving some of these forward through our next budgetary cycle. Some of the recommendations have, from the staff perspective, we've determined them to not be feasible. Most of the ones that we've determined to not be feasible, it's because they're tied to enforcement and they're just not really enforceable. So we'll get to that as we go through the recommendations. And we have, some of these have, you know, some pretty hefty budget or staffing implications. The recommendations, and we'll go through them, are presented in priority order as established by the task force. So as we go through, number one is their top priority. So I'll move right on to those. So the first one, that recommendation, providing public toilet facilities 24/7. So we have a few different options in how we could pursue that one. So that was top priority for businesses, for advocates, for service providers, is that a sense that if there's no place for people to meet basic biological needs, then we can't really expect them to not be taking care of this business downtown. So what can we do to provide some options for them overnight? So some of the background discussion about this was that, you know, we've tried the artipodies. There were challenges with artipodies. There are behavioral issues with facilities that if they're not staffed. So all of the recommendations and discussion was about providing facilities but having them staffed or monitored. So it's not just a funding issue for constructing the facility, there's also an operational issue tied to this. So the primary option would be to partner with an existing service provider to provide that 24/7 access and work with them in a way that can increase their operational capacity so that there could be staffing or monitoring around the clock. The second option would be to keep restrooms at Marion Park or Riverfront Park open around the clock, but that does create the safety and security issues. So we could... option would be to keep restrooms at Marion Park or Riverfront Park open around the clock, but that does create the safety and security issue. So, we could open those up. We do not have the capacity to staff them, and we could expect that there would be behavioral issues and policing issues tied to that. The third implementation option would be to keep a part of the new police station when it is open, that there are public restrooms off the lobby, to keep those open for extended hours. And then, there could be operational issues there, too. You know, you could have extended hours while there are staffing available. 24/7 would have greater staffing impacts. Yes?
So, I'm sorry, I'm just always struck by this. So, when we talk about the risks of having bathrooms open 24/7, so, do other cities just not have behavioral issues? Because other places do seem to have access to facilities. I know we're unique as a city, but I keep coming back to this full circle of, well, it's too risky. But, other communities seem to be able to address this issue, so what?
I think other cities have similar challenges, that there will be drug use, there will be drug dealing, there will be prostitution that occurs. And that is the history here. That's what was going on with artipodies when we had them in our downtown. We have had issues with fires being set in those kinds of portipodies. So, there are challenges. And I think that any community experiences, to some degree or another, those types of challenges.
Thank you.
So, then it's just a question of, do we want to build it knowing that there will be policing issues? And then, feedback that I've received also from other communities, and from some of our service providers, is that if there is a location that becomes used inappropriately, then that precludes others from using it
Right.
because of the behavior that's going on there. So, they will avoid it.
I'm just struck with, on the first item, while it says that, you know, urination, public urination, public defecation are criminal offenses, it's rare and impractical for an officer to be present at the time the offense occurs, or to be able to respond immediately. So, I'm looking at that as a time and enforcement issue. But then, for the restrooms 24/7, we come right back to the time and enforcement issue. So, again, I'm just kind of, I'm just thinking about that.
Lieutenant Upke's here, who has been involved in this type of enforcement with our artipodies downtown, and maybe you can shed some light on what you've encountered.
Yeah, so, looking at time and enforcement issues, with the artipody in particular, we had issues where many of them were, I believe, set on fire. There was drug use, prostitution, and sleeping overnight in those, as well, to the point where other people were, other people that would have utilized them were not utilizing them. I think eventually the program kind of tapered off, because the actual providers of the portipodies refused to continue to operate them, and took them back and just said, "We don't want to participate in this program anymore."
So, I know SEPTED, sorry, follow-up. I know SEPTED is part of the criminal, crime prevention through environmental design, the SEPTED.
Yeah.
So, we've talked about staffing the restrooms. What about having them in sort of a quasi-busy area, or an area where there's already a lot of people congregating? Would that lessen the staffing impact for enforcement, or would that, is there any research or study on that, having a public restroom, where there's lots of cross-traffic?
I do think that the siding does make a difference, and I think that the design does make a difference. You know, I think that was the whole genesis of the Portland Lou, easy to maintain, and private, but not completely private. You know, so you could see kind of what's going on, or how long people are in there.
You mentioned Portland Lou. Is that something you're entertaining for downtown?
That option is included. Yep.
One thing with the, sorry, the enforcement issue as well, that comes up. So, if we were to open the Marion Square, or the Marion Square Park bathroom 24/7, currently now that does have a time when the park is closed, that we can have enforcement action, and prohibit overnight camping and things of that nature. If it's open, that creates another enforcement issue for us, that the restroom may be open, but the rest of the park can't be used. So, accessing it becomes difficult for us to be able to police, you know, the reason for people being in the park at all hours of the night.
I was thinking the same thing, as far as when the shops are closed, when you're downtown, who's left downtown that needs to use the restroom? But, they're public places that people are still there, and how do we balance this? So...
So, implementation option number four is the Portland Lou type of a facility? Yes?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm interested in information number three, and I'm glad to see Lieutenant Upke's here, because we've discussed that. I was at some of the meetings and also discussed that. I mean, you're going to have somebody at the police station 24/7, and I've looked at the preliminary designs, and it seems like you could make it to access the public restrooms, you'd have to come through the front entryway, which would be some sort of monitoring and control. And I presume that you also might have something on the back end. So, you would not, two people going in, you might not allow that, and also after a certain period of time, you know, the doors would spring open, or something would happen. So, I'm wondering if the lieutenant could talk about the feasibility of that.
Yeah, so, one, I'm not fully versed on exactly the mechanism of the restrooms in the facility. It's rather large.
That's not your first area of interest?
Yeah. I'm on the locker room committee. So, part of it is, yeah. But basically, I think the way it's going to be is that there's going to be an entryway that has secure doors on either side, so one can go to kind of the community room, and I believe that's where the restrooms would be. So, as you walk in, to the left would be to the restrooms in that area. To the right would be the business counter and records. I think right now, as far as controlling access, would be if someone comes in, they would have an intercom to request the record staff, which would be staffed on the bottom floor, and they would then request what they needed to do to go to the restroom, and so that they would be buzzed in over to the left, to the public area.
Thank you. And I think that, you know, I thank the staff very much for your discussion of the fact that you can, I suppose this is a poor analogy, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't, you know, you can't make them do what they need to do. Where they do it, and a lot of this is because the mental illness problems, that you could have a bathroom on every corner, and people aren't going to use it. And that's a tough problem, and it's a problem that is much larger than what we can do in Salem. So, I appreciate the fact that no matter what we do, there's still going to be a problem with this type downtown, as long as there are unfortunate people who are downtown.
Councilor Kaser.
I'm not sure if you want to talk about these, like, one at a time, and kind of then move on? I don't know the right...
Let's stick with the restroom for just a minute. If we're done, we can move to the next item.
So, a couple of comments, like, well, you haven't gotten through the rest of the implementation, I guess.
So, the last item on the restroom was the Portland Lou option, yeah?
So, I guess my thoughts on it are this, is restrooms downtown, you know, it seems like we need restrooms for, you know, we have a population of people who are experiencing homeless. They largely congregate around the Marion Square Park arches, you know, those community providers, UGM. To me, it makes the most sense, as far as access, and then, you know, looking at our finances, that we partner with somebody like arches, to be able to provide that 24/7, you know, staffed restroom. And also, looking forward to the new police facility, because it's basically in the same area of the city. And we're going to have already staffed there, I think, 24 hours a day, and there's a community area, and it's going to be separate. So, I think we could probably tackle a couple of these without actually, like, constructing facilities. I think there is, you know, Lieutenant Upke's, like you said, there's kind of a disconnect between, let's leave Marion Square Park restroom open 24/7, yet people are supposed to be at the park 24/7. So, it's kind of this, it sends mixed signals, I guess, about the appropriate use of that space. The Portland Lou, I mean, I would love to see that one day. It's expensive. And I think it's just one of those things we have to consider, is like, we could use urban renewal dollars to construct those, but then it's $20,000 a year to maintain it. And we could probably get there, but it's going to be more difficult, and it's longer term. And it's one to two years, and some of these others we can implement in as soon as six months. So, I'm looking at, possibly there's some low-hanging fruit. Maybe there's also some longer-term solutions here, too. So, I think they're all valid in their own way. It's just prioritizing which ones we want to tackle first.
Okay. Shall we move on, then, to our next area?
Yes, if we've got the discussion completed on that one. Good.
Did you want to say something?
I did. I just, I wanted to say, with Councilor Kaser's analysis of the restroom issue, I agree. I would just want to be mindful that the homeless population is not the only population, the houseless population is not the only population using park facilities, and that restrooms continue to become an issue for everyone, whether local residents or regional residents that are using our park. As we continue to improve those facilities, they become a draw. So, again, just like with the bulb-outs, if we're constructing restrooms, but those restrooms are going to have to be locked at night, because they present issues, and we have the option of creating a private, sort of, you know, eliminate some of these other hazards, option like the Portland Lou, that's local, I would encourage us to just pursue it, and not be, not, not at least try and get a good deal. They're local, they're from this region, and we have a unique issue and unique opportunity. So, I see the, this particular option of construction being a good way to make sure that we're incorporating that design and improving access for everybody.
Yeah. We'll have an opportunity to talk about this issue, really, in detail at the time we look at the budget, I think. But, you make a good point, and one you want to save, I think, for the budget. Go ahead, then, on to the next one.
All right. The second one is more an operational and communication recommendation, and that is to establish a simplified point of contact for individuals to call for support when they're dealing with issues related to homelessness, and provide the community with guidelines on when to call 911, or the non-emergency number. So, option number one is that a partnership with Northwest Human Services that has put into place a system called iCarroll, and promote that as the go-to resource. The county had also been exploring a similar program, but I understand, just in the last week or so, that a decision has been made to not move forward with their system, and instead support the iCarroll system. So, that is information that, when that partnership is in place with Northwest Human Services, that that's the information that we could start pushing out, that this is, this is the contact, and share that with our businesses and residents downtown.
So, this would replace?
There really hasn't been anything. What we've had is this, a piece of paper that has had dozens and dozens
It's a resource.
Lists and numbers, right. It's a resource.
Okay.
So, instead of this, a flyer that's never kept up to date, and is really hard to navigate, that would just be one number that we could share with everybody, that this is, this is what you're calling to.
So, I have this, I'm a storekeeper. Why? I have this issue going on in front. I call that number, and?
And, so, if you, it wouldn't be so much for the storekeeper that has an issue, but if there is perhaps an individual that has been camping in front of their business, and they want to try to connect that person to a resource.
Got it.
Or if I, myself, am the person that is experiencing homelessness, as another kind of connection, or that other resources could go to.
Great. Okay. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you. Doesn't 211 cover that service?
So, it's, so 211 is what we've had in the past, but that's, that's kind of the sheet that has been handed out, that has just scads of names and resources. So, iCarroll is a little bit more streamlined than the 211, is for my understanding of it.
So, I have this problem, I call iCarroll, and they can connect me to the appropriate resource. Is that the concept?
That's my, yes, that's the conduit.
It'd be interesting when we
If you're calling in and you want information.
Start working on these, if it comes to the budget, maybe. Have someone here who can take us through the mechanism.
This one really wouldn't be a budgetary issue for us. No.
Okay, it's just we're in or we're out.
So, this one, when I mentioned that it's sort of operational and communication, so, the request from Northwest Human Services was that they, they would like us to establish, and they're not the only, so I shouldn't say them, but there is an interest in the community, on behalf of most of our service partners, that we establish some ongoing structure to continue the dialogue that was started on this task force between service providers and businesses, and city staff, and county staff. And Northwest Human Services, their particular interest is, they have this system, but they, they don't want that just being pushed out there in absence of this ongoing collaboration and relationship.
Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at, under Roman numeral 2, on page four, you talk about the county, and that's kind of, that's just, I don't know where it fits in in all this, but social services, healthcare, as you say, that's typically been a role of county governments. And that ought to be the role of Marion County here. So, I'm curious as to, is Marion County doing its job? And how we, as the city, can coordinate with the county, because the social services, the healthcare, is not traditionally a responsibility of a city. And you mentioned that here. You say, gee, if we start going down that road, we may be the only people who are doing it. So, has there been contact with the county? And what are we doing with county mental health and county social services, which is their bailiwick?
So, some of that coordination and the county's effort is through the regional work on homelessness, and that's centered through the COG. Okay, so, our, kind of, our interface with them has largely been through that forum, and the steering committee that's housed with the COG, and the position that we're partially funding with the COG. So, what we're talking about here is really focused on the downtown, and not broader homelessness. So, you know, we're looking at solutions tied to our downtown, which, in terms of the county's interests or county's role, is sort of a yes and no. Yes, we're within the county, and these are services they provide, but we're focusing on a very localized area here. And, so, could they be more engaged in our downtown? I think that, you know, it would be reasonable to want them and ask them to be at the table if there were some ongoing organizational structure, you know, that may be met quarterly to discuss these issues. You know, I think it would be reasonable to want the county at that table. Whether or not they own that structure is a different question, in terms of where it really belongs.
Well, is the county at the table?
They were not at the table as far as the task force. They are at the table for broader regional discussions on homelessness.
And I see the lieutenant's nodding his head. So, maybe you've had discussions with the sheriff's department?
Not necessarily with the sheriff's department, but with the Department of Health and Human Services. So, we already have established partnerships that we use and coordinate with on those levels.
Because from the county level, it doesn't seem to make much difference to me, is there's somebody in Marion County who needs social service and needs social help, whether that's in Almsville, or in Salem, or in the country, you know, they're still in the county, and the county provides social services. So, you know, I would hope that, you know, they're the people that have the mental health officers, and the people who deal with that. So, I would hope that they could get into the picture here a little more.
Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, just a comment. Putting aside who's responsible, one of the things that I recall from the task force was the businesses continuing, saying, "We would like to be able to help, but we really don't know where to go. We don't know who to call." This, to me, is one of the most important aspects of the recommendations. They have that single point where it's simple for the business owners to say, "Here, call this number." And I, we heard that over and over and over again. They really, the business owners seemed to really want to help, but they were in the dark about as far as how to do it. This will help that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So the, the second piece under this item is to develop communication materials, share with the downtown businesses and the broader community that guidance on 911 versus the non-emergency. That is drafted, you know, kind of what's holding that up is this sort of iCarroll piece and needing to know whether or not we're going to be establishing an ongoing partnership.
Do we need to act at some point then?
At some point, I think we'll need to determine whether or not we're going to convene, convene some sort of ongoing either task force or committee or something that can continue to kind of vet these sorts of issues.
Will this element go through the council?
So, because we've got different parts of this. So there will be budgetary requests that will come back through council, but-
For this element?
So the, the request to establish some sort of structure would require council direction.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. Well, we'll have a chance then, I think, to, and I think you can hear who we'd like to have at the table or in the-
The county.
Yeah.
And then the third, it kind of falls under the same, same category. It's encouraging, facilitate the ongoing dialogue between police, city staff, social service providers and businesses. So some of these recommendations kind of overlap each other. So that's just a continuation of that same theme. So moving on to recommendation number three, and that is to establish a good neighbor partnership for those that are involved downtown. And in conjunction with that partnership, then any revisions to ordinances or codes or any potential future discussions about camping ordinances, anything like that, then would be discussed through that venue. So the discussion around this item was that there are some individuals on the task force that were interested in addressing this issue through, through codes and ordinances. There were others that felt that, that moving down that path in absence of the relationship building side of things didn't make any sense. So to not spend time discussing, I'll use Sit Lie as an example, to not move forward with something like Sit Lie without having the relationship side of things in place and the collaboration there first to kind of talk through issues like this.
Then how does this get convened? How will that happen?
So I, I see this, all of this under one potential structure that brings together, I'll use like our, I'll use our downtown advisory board as an example, okay? Where it's, you know, a board or commission of some type or task force or whatever that, probably not task force, but something ongoing that meets perhaps quarterly, that brings service providers, the county, businesses, property owners and the city together, you know, on, on a regular basis to talk about, you know, what they're doing, how we can work more systematically and more strategically. And is then sort of a sounding board for different ideas and approaches and solutions.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Kaisers.
I just want to add that I think this is also one of the most important recommendations to come out of the task force. And that's, you know, similar to what Counsel Lewis was talking about. It's people wanted to continue the conversation, you know, after the task force was, was done. So I, and I think one of the things that came up was who, who owns it?
Right.
And that's still kind of a question mark. And then if the city owns it, do we have capacity to run that? Do we run the risk of now being the social service provider and all that kind of stuff? But I do think we need to, we'll have to figure it out because it is so important. And there was so much willingness to continue that conversation, so.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think one of the things that we talked about is that there's, there's a lot of, lot of isolation. You know, the businesses aren't talking with service providers. Service providers aren't necessarily talking with each other. There's not regular communication between all the different parties on solving, addressing a really big complicated issue.
Well, I'll, I'll look forward to your recommendation then on how to convene it because I think Counselor Kaisers is kind of describing the, the problem and I, but it does have, you can feel it as a, a place where you can talk about and at least find out what's going on besides our email or online, where we can actually hear from people and, and get some accurate description of where people have questions. I mean, we're constantly asked, why aren't you just enforcing your vagrancy law? What vagrancy law? You know, that kind of stuff, I think, would be just having a place to bring those issues, whether we bring them or business owner or a homeless person or anyone else to get to a, a point of understanding what, what we can and can't do. I, I really like this too. I, I view it as really important place to clarify some of these issues for us. Yeah?
I think as well, since the conclusion of the task force, I think that the ongoing communication amongst these groups has continued to grow organically and I've seen that on the street, that things have gotten better amongst all the different groups in communicating. So I do believe the desire is still there, but I also think that outside of a formal structure, that everyone's taken upon themselves to communicate in a much better way.
Great. Thank you.
So some of the implementation options under this recommendation were, one of them was to look at behavioral policies, kind of codes of contact, that UGM and some of the other service providers are putting into place. Upon discussing that further internally, staff is not recommending that. That goes back to expectations that if you establish a code of conduct, the community, downtown community then expects compliance with that, but there's no way that we could enforce it. So-
Do we use, the police used to have that exclusion. Is that used?
Yes, it is used.
It is used?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But it's for enumerated offenses only, so they have to actually commit-
So it's like drunkenness or?
No, well, there's no law against drunkenness in public, so there's nothing we can exclude for that.
What then can you have to do?
Things like disorderly conduct, urination, defecation in public, things like that would exclude somebody from downtown for up to 30 days.
Okay. How many people are under that right now? I mean, how many people have been excluded lately?
I really couldn't tell you.
Okay.
Yeah. We can generate, we can generate that, but, you know, I just don't off the top of my head.
Okay.
And we do provide exceptions to that. So if people need to receive services within the downtown area, then we do, of course, grant them permission to do that too.
Okay. Okay.
So then the next one is another sort of overlapping one, and that is developing another kind of card and flyer for business owners to be able to share with individuals who are homeless to give them information on alternatives.
Okay. Yes, sorry.
This is not on this, this one in specifically, but also others in general. And I see there's a lot of where you point out the risk in many of these options. The risk is there's a potential to increase confusion if partnerships are not in place and if the messaging is not clearly constructed. And I take it from what Lieutenant Upke's is saying, that we're starting to get the partnership and, because a lot of these suggestions, that's the, that's the only risk is that it's going to fall apart because there's going to be a mixed message.
Yeah.
So I'm sure you're focusing on that.
It's that risk or providing incorrect information. If you don't have the partnership and you're not continuing to have current and correct information and then you're providing somebody bad information, then that's just going to aggravate the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Then the next one is revising Salem's ordinances to provide restrictions on camping or storing personal items on downtown sidewalks during business hours. There was not consensus at all about this recommendation. So the, I'd say the group was pretty divided on this one. I think if we do look at future code changes again, the recommendation would be that it would be through, through that kind of partnership or kind of vetting it through whatever sort of commission or, or partnership it gets established. The next one would be requiring site cleanup by campers who camp overnight on downtown sidewalks. And this is another one that staff is not recommending, again, just due to the inability to enforce it. Okay. So recommendation number four, we're getting halfway there. Pursue options for expanding the downtown cleaning services. And so there are a few ways that we're looking at implementing this. One would be looking at a dignity to work model and that I think Albuquerque and some other cities have done and partner with service providers on that to either through grant funding, it'd likely be through grant funding, be able to employ individuals who are homeless and have them through that grant program, add capacity to our cleaning services and then also provide some work experience. Another option would be mentorship opportunities and partnerships and to encourage the, the businesses, if they have individuals who are camping in front of their businesses, to, you know, maybe mentor or, or work more closely with those individuals. The third one is also tied to cleanliness and that is having adequate trash receptacles, enough of them, having, maybe increasing the frequency of removing trash. This one, you know, I see is kind of tied to streetscape as we revisit our furnishings, you know, making sure we're getting the right kinds of receptacles that aren't as easy to maybe get into. Like if you're downtown in the morning, lots of times you'll see that these containers are opened up and the trash containers are pulled out as people have gone through them overnight and then there will be piles of trash around them. So this one I would recommend deferring until we get into furnishings with the streetscape project and, and address it through that.
I was also pleased to see hazardous disposal as well included on this for health and safety. So thank you.
Just another comment from Corvallis. What they did is they had a design party, a contest and for street garbage cans and they, and they had planters on top and they were locked. So they, you couldn't get into them and they didn't look like a garbage can, they looked like a planter.
Recommendation number five is one I know the mayor's interested in, and that's developing the additional storage. And so we've got a couple of different options there and that one would be to, again, partner with the service provider and perhaps co-locate storage and maybe fund the construction of that storage using urban renewal. Another one would be to look at city location, city property and establish storage in city, somewhere on city property in the downtown area. Another thing that's come up recently that's not included here, and, and this is something that's just come up in the last couple of days, is, is bike lockers. That we have increasing use of our bike lockers throughout our parks and in parking garages that is being used to store items, possessions of homeless individuals. So the question was raised here just in the last day or two, you know, do we look at that as a storage option? Or do we look at eliminating the bike lockers or, you know, kind of, there's another potential opportunity or, or something that we need to address? Because if they're being used for storage, then they're not available for people with bikes. But is that maybe in addition to bike lockers, you know, is there an opportunity to use that kind of facility for storage? So another thing that we can explore.
Just a sec. Go ahead.
I join the mayor in this. That's been one of the things that I think is quite important. And the mayor and I had a conversation earlier this evening about that, that if these are in fact in order and, you know, the, the first four seem to be kind of interconnected, but this one certainly seems to be one that we could do something about it. It might, if utilized again, I mean, we have the same problem of you can provide them and they may not use them like with the, the restroom facilities, but I think this would be quite helpful to get people's possessions in a secure place so they don't have to worry about, I'm going to have my stuff wherever I go with my garbage cart. Or not grocery cart, not garbage cart.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I think when you're dealing with a situation where all of a person's possessions are in a, generally in a single card and backpack, that we should be able to help them accommodate that. To me, just thinking back on when this sort of sense of explosion of homelessness really occurred, it was virtually the day after UGM removed their lockers and closed those off where people were storing possessions. And I, I, I think that's one of the stigmas for people is to be, having to push a card around. I, it just strikes me as something we can do and that we need to find space, but I've been concerned about this for a couple of years, so I'm glad we're, that it arrived on this list because it really caught my attention.
There are models also where it's volunteer staff to check in and check out. So, you know, there are a few different ways to approach that.
And I think we have a large community that's very interested in volunteer opportunities. And I think this is one of those that just, I mean, every once in a while you'd like to make life a little bit easier for people and this one would be one of those that you're not stuck with trying to both haul it around and protect it and, you know, keep it dry and all the other things that confront people when they're in this situation.
Number six is providing a hygiene center with showers and laundry facilities. Again, partnership would be key in this one, you know, looking at partnering with a service provider that has, you know, those sorts of facilities and helping to subsidize operations to keep those available and open on weekends or for extended hours. Providing grant funds to service providers to operate shower and restroom facilities citywide. If we wanted to look at getting out of the downtown, we could look at, you know, in, so we're in the middle of, or just starting the grant cycle right now for our federal programs and the city's $400,000 general fund that goes to grants. So that's already been advertised and we're receiving applications, but in a future year, if we chose to, we could set aside some of that money to support that type of activity. Then item eight is supporting alternate ways of giving. And the, one of the recommendations was reinvigorating the Give Hope Not Help campaign and educating the public on alternate ways of giving. Another one would be to repurpose coin, our coin parking meters and locate them throughout the downtown. That one, I, that one has some challenges in the collecting coins, processing coins, all of that is, is very time consuming and it takes a lot of staff time to do that. I think there are other ways that we could encourage giving that, that would be more efficient, I think.
I thought that the parking funds go into the general fund as a-
No, no.
This would be donation.
So this is just the old fashioned meters, not the car readers?
Right. Yes. This, this would be taking old fashioned meters-
So this isn't free parking, we're doing the parking?
No, no. This would be, you know, taking old meters, maybe painting them a different color and signing them, you know, can make a donation here. But you get into, you know, meter maintenance and coin collection and it, it can just take a lot of staff time. So it's probably not the best from an operational perspective. Then another option, this could involve partnership with the Chamber of Commerce or maybe Main Street and our downtown businesses, would be establish a text to donate program. The way this works in Salem, Massachusetts, is if you text in your donation, and maybe this is through an organization like United Way or something, you text in your donation and from that text, you can go to a participating business and get, you know, 20% off of your dinner or something that day. So if you show it the day that you make the donation. So, you know, there's a potential partnership between service providers and downtown businesses on something like that. Then eight B, this, this goes back to the grant that you'll be seeing at your next meeting, and that's to encourage property owners to make building and site modifications to help with their site security and, you know, address issues like access to dumpsters, lighting around their building, security cameras. A lot of our downtown buildings, you know, have the little alcoves at the front. A lot of our downtown buildings, you know, have the little alcoves at the front, you know, there, or even off the back in their alley, you know, ways to increase security there.
Would that be done in conjunction with the streetscape? I mean, would it be part of the planning for that, or would you...
We're looking at this as a separate grant program that would be a no-match grant, and so, rather than us...
I'm thinking more in design and functionality in terms of how it would fit with the rest of the look of our...
A lot of these improvements we're thinking would actually, a lot of them would be off of the alley, you know, where we tend to have, see more issues.
Okay. Okay.
And, well, and also because of the streetscape issue, a lot of these are building improvements, not really sidewalk kind of improvement. So, it'd be lights on your building, security cameras on your building, if you have dumpsters off the alley, ways to better secure those.
Councilor.
Thank you. So, just a question about the SEP TED, and what comes to mind is the spikes on the floor, and also looking at the streetscaping that we just talked about with the public space, the space for the business, the private space, trying to see that if there were any recommendations, what might happen, because the behavior you might attempt to discourage might actually be discouraging or hurtful to a wide variety of people if you're in a public space, and how that might change. Is that making sense? Am I going to see spikes everywhere?
No, 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 no. We're not talking about spikes.
Okay.
No.
So...
No, we're talking about improvements that a building owner could make to his or her property to, you know, maybe establish better lighting, if there are issues, you know, at the back of their building off the alley, where if they could improve their lighting, maybe have security cameras, or if they have dumpsters that people keep getting into, if, you know, fund, maybe building an enclosure around the dumpster to increase security.
I think, and the streetscapes bring this up, we're in a really unique situation being close to the Capitol and having the Capitol building so close. We do have marches, we do have events, and Salem PD is always there to help make sure things are under control, but just making sure that we're still keeping that welcoming and safe environment for people and not necessarily inadvertently creating a hostile environment in our public places.
Yeah. No, we're not, we're not talking like razor wire fencing around.
I haven't seen the razor wire yet, but I've seen the spikes, so.
Councilor, Councilor Lewis.
Yeah, again, on page 11, under number three, the risk, there's a potential to increase confusion if partnerships aren't in place, and I, we see that over and over again, as Councilor Anderson pointed out. My question is that, that to me now jumps out as a priority to get these partnerships solidified. Is there a timeframe on, or a guess of when that could be done?
You know, so, I think that's really going to come down to, first of all, whether or not the city as an organization wants to take on that ownership role of the partnership or not. So, if it's not the city, then I couldn't tell you how long it might take for that sort of partnership to form. You know, if it is something that the city chooses to take on, you know, then it could be much more timely.
Councilor Kaser.
Well, since this is a work session, I would love to actually have a brief discussion about that, because that's the issue I keep coming back to, is who's the owner of all this stuff? And it's something we haven't, there's not a clear answer. In some ways, I feel like the city should be the owner because it's happening in our city. On the other hand, it creates a lot of overhead for us in terms of, you know, can we actually do that financially and provide, can we do it well, I guess? And does that put onto us more of a role of a social service provider that we don't necessarily want? But it's a question that's going to have to be answered, or really, most of this is not going to be able to be done if we can't answer that question. So, 'cause I see a lot of things feeding into that group, that good neighbor, whatever it would be called, but a lot of these things would be considered by that group, pushed by that group, helped to be, you know, financed possibly by, through that group. But that is one of the lingering unresolved things that I feel to move forward, we're going to have to just make a decision about, not tonight, obviously, but at least to have the conversation and really seriously consider if that is our role as a city.
Councilor.
Thank you. So, coming out of the task force, I think Councilor Kaser, I really appreciate this work, and also, second, what you're saying, because what I'm looking at is the neutrality of it. It is happening in our city, but by allowing, or by taking that step back, who's going to step forward to fill that, and if there's going to be interests that can be neutral, if they're the same providers that are dealing with those services, how we can help create some equity at the table for the service providers and for the people using those services? Would this be appropriate for an additional board or an additional commission, convening those partners? And maybe would that lessen the staff workload, or would that be appropriate? I think those are some questions that I would be interested in hearing some of the answers to, if that's an option, or what that process would look like.
Well, our traditional role has been to allocate $400,000 and allocate it to the various groups dealing with those priority issues that we identify. We've changed off of, in social services, economic development, which was the goal for the past, whatever, four, five, six years, to homelessness. And we certainly can look at that fund as, but you also along the way begin to excite other organizations who deal, I think everyone with, to some extent with homelessness, but they deal with other issues that we also support, and finding that balance, and particularly in a time of reasonably scarce resources. And I think that it'll be interesting as you see what kind of applications you get for your social service fund and how you recommend allocating it. It may be that there's a missing element there, and we can see it in the budget, but it still feels like a budgetary issue. Social services is, can be wildly expensive, just wildly expensive, depending on how deep you want to go in, and once you're in, you're in. Pretty, you know, you can go in quite a ways, and you want to do it right if you're going to take this on. So, I really think this will be part of our budget discussion, particularly after we see the kind of requests for allocation of the resources we have. Does that make sense to you?
If I may, I think certainly we can view it through a budgetary lens as should be. I think there's also, though, the important consideration of specificity in what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I think there's, for example, a discussion that council should have regarding, is it ownership or is it convening? I think there's also a question of council's role. Perhaps an approach would be a group that's convened by the city manager or the urban development director, when there are specific initiatives that require attention and more vetting before they're ready for the city council or the county commission or the nonprofit Certainly considerations regarding the, you know, the ongoing role of the city and the ongoing role of city councils. I think, I think we should come back with some options that I think could help council discuss those, and certainly those options, the options that have budgetary considerations, we can, we can have ready for the upcoming budget year. But I think there are some, there's some additional information that we can provide to you prior to the budget considerations on these kind of, these policy and role, the role of the city issues.
That's really good advice. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Powers. Yeah, Councilor.
Just to add, you know, when I was going through this process all last year and just kind of thinking about it over the last few months, I've always felt like the role of the city is more convener, facilitator than it is actually like, we're going to own it and make all the decisions about it and all that that entails. And having more of a, I think what you're saying, Mr. Manager, is like an ad hoc group that's meeting as things come up to make some decisions about it, and that might be a good starting point. So, I vote, it's kind of one of those things, like, what does the city do best? Does the city do social services the best? I would argue no. We do them okay, it depends on what it is. So, there's that, the saying, you know, do what you do best and network the rest, right? And we should be looking towards those places that are doing that all the time, they know the business, so, but, yeah.
Okay. Great. Just really excellent information, lots to, lots to think about. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, then we're adjourned.